So, the president's report is usually based on what I've been doing the last month. It's sort of irrelevant at the moment.
Admitted for the record.
But actually, I could do that. Yeah, I've done a lot of things, but not concerning Detroit, but you know, I still live there. But following last month's meetings, we actually had two meetings last month. We had the regular meeting and then we had the retreat meeting to discuss. I don't know if you were here this morning, or you heard anything on this morning. We've been looking at ways of reforming the delivery of services of education throughout the state and how to support it and make it more effective. So, we have been doing a lot of work about improving the education delivery system and education quality in the state of Michigan. But last month Liz and I went to two things that follow, they following the board meeting. One was the Center of Michigan had a forum on reforming education and they had started with early childhood and they ended with higher education, which is similar to what we were talking about today. And they had panels on early childhood, they had panels on K-12, they had panels on higher ed. Mike was on the one for K-12. And it was really quite informative. The audience consisted of many citizens as well as some legislative staff and nonprofit organizations and professionals, but there were a lot of just ordinary citizens there. And the Center for Michigan has this system of, they have these little automatic vote things, I don't know what you call them, I call them clickers, but there's a technical name for them.
Response system.
And they take, they ask questions. I was a little disappointed, I didn't think the questions didn't always elicit very appropriate answers. The questions were not worded well, in my estimation, but they did go through that exercise. But then we went to Grand Rapids and we participated, we were at a meeting of this consensus for change think tank that Liz has been involved in, and Mike was there too. And that was interesting because we met the members of that group and, well Liz had known who they are, but we met them and it was, they're from all over the state and it was quite interesting. And of course, they presented to us too at the previous, at that day's, that meeting, I think. So, we, but it was interesting to take part in that and they're continuing and they're having a visit to Battle Creek Schools tomorrow to see what they're doing with, I think, online education as well as other things. So, those things are still going on. Then I participated again in the Detroit Urban League's youth dialogue, which is always a very, it's a very interesting experience because it's an attempt to have the students learn from people who have been active in their community and have elicited, affected some positive change, hopefully this positive change. And the students asked very good questions, they were interested, they're from all, they're all from Detroit high schools. And it's, it's a stimulating exchange. The people who are the presenters are the people who have received the Urban League's distinguished warrior awards. A few of them are the children of people who received those awards, they have since passed away. But, so I was teamed with Penny Millander, who's now a judge in Detroit, whose father, Robert Millander, was a real woofer and shaker. And it was interesting to hear her experiences and my experiences growing up and so on. They were sort of amazed, the kids are sort of amazed that some of the things that they didn't know existed or happened years ago. So, that's, it's a whole good, good thing to do. Another interesting session I was at was the Michigan's Children and some other organizations, sponsors of a meeting on safe schools. They talked about, the people there ranged from community folks to the representative of the Detroit Police Department, who apparently are working with some of these community groups, which is a positive thing. They did everything from safe routes to schools, to keeping schools safe, anti-bullying activities. Bob Higgins from our staff was one of the presenters of that session. And it's interesting, all these things are going on all the time. I mean, there are meetings and efforts by people to improve the schools going on all, this was in Detroit, at Wayne County Community College, the old Mercy College campus on Out of Drive. Then later that month, the United Way of Southeast Michigan sponsored a conference on early childhood education, to which I was invited, and that was at Mary Grove College. And there too, they had several hundred people, big crowd, including many mothers, young mothers with babies or toddlers. And they talked about the need for childcare, not only childcare, but early child, making childcare more of an early childhood education experience than just childcare. And their whole approach was, I said, we were very supportive and we have been pushing for early childhood education for years and they want to make sure it's implemented. They want to, they want to move it to the next level and make sure everything that we want is actually implemented and working for the families that need the, need the early childhood education. So, if they can help do that, that's great. So, it was, it was very interesting. The two keynote speakers were the senior advisor to Secretary Arnie Duncan on early childhood programs, probably there never was, there never was a position like that before in the department, which I found hard to believe, but true. And an assistant secretary on health and human services for early childhood. And among the people who was, who was one of the presenters there that day too, was Lindy Bush, who apparently is a very good friend of this woman who's the senior advisor to Duncan on early childhood, which should be of some help to us, I hope. And she also knew the other one, so that was good. And then, let me just see what else. I took my husband, or he, well, he took me actually, to the first robotics, first, that's the, that's not first, it's the name of it, F-I-R-S-T, all in capital letters, robotics competition. It's an, this was a statewide competition, I don't know if you all know about that, but it's an, it's an attempt to interest kids in working in science and engineering and they're given a, they're sent a kit of parts to build robots. Six, they've all got the same kit, they have six weeks to build it, they have mentors from private industry, and it's really a great program. The thing that I was really interested in was that they have a student greeting when, the student was from Detroit, and they have really worked at trying to get Detroit schools' mentors and get them involved in this robotics competition. And there were several Detroit schools included in this. And one of the people took us down to what they call the pits and we saw the kids and talked to the students and their mentors about what they're doing. And you should see these engines that they put together, they look like the inside of a car. And they're similar, but the kids build it all themselves with guidance. And then one of the things the mentor said is they have to control themselves not to do it. They have to teach the kids how to do it. So, they, and it's really, of course, they have a competition and this was, each year it's a different theme, this year it was a soccer game. So, here are these robots kicking the ball over the, into the goal and the robots have to go over an impediment or go under the impediment and they have to guide, the kids have to guide it. So, it's a really terrific experience. And it was one team from Detroit that said, the International Academy in Detroit is in the former Northern High School and it's all girls' school, all girls' academy. And that team was in the final competition, so that was kind of interesting. But the very, one of the girls I spoke to said that she kind of thought she might be interested in engineering and she thought she would try to do this. And now she's really sold on it and she wants to be an engineer. So, it's the kind of thing that does, that's the whole idea, was to hook kids on science and getting, that, engineers are in great, you know, they're needed, we have to train our own engineers in this country, but they all come from China. So, that was very good. I think you all know that the State Board has been awarded an award by the Department of Community Health for our efforts in trying to improve the health of students and provide nutrition and all. And they're giving the award tomorrow at the State Capitol and Carolyn Curtin is nice enough to stay overnight tonight so she can represent us and receive this award, and I want to thank her for that.
It would be an honor to do it for all of you.
Yes, and so we're honored to get that recognition. I mean, this is, one of the things we're concerned about is making sure that our students are healthy, that they have healthy nutrition and, because we know that they can't function well if they're not healthy in a good, healthy student environment. And the other thing is, we're going to have a report at the, by the staff at the June meeting on the Common Core standards, but NASB sponsored regional conferences on the Common Core standards for State Board members and, and a team of three people from the state. Mary Ann and John represented us at that, so that conference in St. Louis. And I think Mary Ann is prepared to give us a report on it today if we have time.
Deb Clemens was there from the department.
And Deb Clemens was the staff person, because she was the one who was, gave the presentation to us before on the Common Core standards. So, a lot has been going on. And I know that all of you go out and speak and, and Rob makes the front page of the paper and so on. It was interesting, yesterday I was at the Rotary Club in Birmingham and one of the members, I, the whole thing is interesting, the whole procedure before you get to the speaker, but one of the members was asked to give a little presentation. He's 95 years old and he spoke about the experience of Warren Buffett, who he described, as we all know, as one of the most brilliant people in the country, if not the world. And he did a survey of his, of his employees at Berkshire Hathaway, from the lowest level person to him, on what their income was and how much they paid in taxes and then figure out the percentage of what their income was to the taxes, or the taxes to the income. And to his amazement and dismay, he learned that the, his percentage of his income that goes to taxes is much, much lower than the lowest paid employee. And he thought there was something wrong with that picture, that that was not right. So, I thought that that, and he, this elderly gentleman, who was a retired businessman in Detroit, urged them all to pay their taxes cheerfully and be grateful that they don't have to pay more. But I thought of tied in with what we, what we were talking about before, our recommendation for, there's a recommendation in there for, a potential recommendation, the consideration of a graduated income tax. I, it was, I was really surprised to have this job and get up there and the woman next to me who said, "He's 95 years old." So, it's kind of interesting. But, and I, I just want to say, I think we have to do, we are going to do something about this situation that we heard about today, so I'm very glad about that. And I'm very glad that we have been working on trying to come up with some recommendations that will be useful and maybe helping to solve some of the financial woes and do it better than we can improve the delivery of services and education. So, I think we're really working on a lot of issues that are important. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Kat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kat, a reporter, the superintendent, I think Sally did a good job on Race to the Top. The only thing I would reemphasize is we're going to have a final application back here at the May meeting. That should give plenty of time, as she said, for MOUs to be accomplished in the field and people to feel comfortable that they had enough time. Reform Office, this is maybe the only one, I'll cut everything else today, but the Reform Office is the one under new state law that requires us to have a relationship and ultimately create a reform district for the lowest performing schools in the state. Certainly led and spearheaded by Lisa, contributed by other folks in the department, we were able to get a supplemental that gets us through part of this year to build an office. Were able to appoint a reform officer pretty much right away. The rest of it is pretty much more like July 1, although we may be able to stagger some of these. And then the full office wouldn't be in place until October, beginning of the new year. I made a decision that I'd like, I'm going to appoint an interim reform officer/deputy superintendent in order to build this office. This is, we're really a year away from those times that we'll actually be working with the schools. And so, I've asked Mary Alice Galloway if she would be willing to serve in that role and she's gladly accepted this challenge and I, she's going to be just great because what, what we really need to do is not only build an office, but a lot of what Mary Alice does now, particularly, let's use this concrete example of the school improvement grants that I mentioned earlier, those are a natural alignment with the, with the issues that we're going to be dealing with, with the reformed schools. And as a matter of fact, they may be and they would be close to the same schools, there may be different years of data that we're using. So, to build an office to integrate those and not have a silo at the end, thinking about Liz's profound points earlier, the way we just keep building silos in state government, this is a way to make sure we don't have a silo. The person has to exist because ultimately there's authority in that person and given under state law. So, that, that's the main thing and we're going to get going on that pretty soon. I've asked Mary Alice and Sally to think about this week, official starting time. And then that would be probably in the neighborhood of six months, maybe a little bit longer. And then in the meantime, they're going to backfill, you know, Mary Alice's job and in turn, if that happens to be someone from within, keep backfilling the jobs throughout because they're all important in our work. And then finally, and connected to that, I'm going to reorganize this so-called superintendent's office, which is everything back here. It's actually a misnomer that I feel like I have to defend in budget hearings and stuff because it's not just the superintendent, it's communications, it's the deputy superintendents and others. But I want to use this as an opportunity to reorganize and downsize that office at the same time that we're going to be building a reform office and maybe at the same time anticipate cuts that are going to be six months down the road so that we don't build something and then immediately have to start thinking about some layoffs. So, we're going to try to work through that hopefully by Friday. I'm going to talk to folks later today more about the exact timeline on that. But it's an exciting time in one sense, we want to do it right. We want to create the atmosphere where actually these schools can get the supports they need to improve so that they never would actually end up in a statewide district. But we obviously have to be ready that that may happen in some cases. There'll be anywhere from maybe 80 to 200 schools in the state that would fall into that category and more to come on that as the time goes on. The rest of that I'll, I'll hold off to our mid-month report. Anything else on the superintendent's report? Rob, Teacher of the Year.
All right. Several things going on. Obviously, in a couple of weeks, I'm going back to DC, that'll be a lot of fun. My children are unbelievably excited, as you can imagine, and my wife has a long list of sites to see while I'm working for a week, but that's okay. Other than that, I've been doing a lot of presentations and going different places as have all of you. One of my highlights, actually, I had a couple of really, really fun ones. I was at East Lansing and I did this preschool program for preschool kids and their parents on early literacy skills. And it was so much fun and now I'm getting into the circuit of the libraries, which is kind of fun and some of the preschool centers are calling me and asking me to come to do some presentations with them. And then Mulick Park Elementary in Grand Rapids, I don't know if you're familiar with that one. One of the teachers there had actually seen a presentation of mine in October and they'd been trying to get me scheduled to come all year and they ended up doing a fundraiser in the building. I couldn't believe that, just to pay for my sub, my sub day. So, when they went to that much effort, you figure I have got to deliver. So, they wanted me to do a K-5 presentation, two of them actually, for their March's Reading Month big finale and they happened to, this was right up my alley, their theme was rock and roll. And so, I thought, oh, okay, okay.
Boy, you're good at that.
Yeah, and so, of course, I showed up as Johnny B. Good and as a greaser and everything and wrote four songs for them and had all this unbelievable commuter, computer interactive stuff and it was all in literacy and getting the kids fired up to keep reading over their spring break, which was delightfully fun. And when I left, all the kids are screaming, "Bye Johnny." It was really, it was a lot of fun. On Thursday, I'm going to be going to Detroit, actually, I was invited down to the Parade Company where they have an educator open house and I'm going to be a keynoter for them. And I was just contacted yesterday to go on Monday to the Governor's Education Summit and I get to introduce, I guess, the State Superintendent Mike Flanagan again, so how about that? And I think that was only a direct result of this. So, they said, "Hey, we saw you in the paper, can you, would you mind coming?" My children, my students were delighted with this coverage, we've got some more coverage coming in actually on Wednesday and so the kids think that they're pretty hot stuff now, which is really kind of fun. So, I'm saving all these papers to give to children if, if you have others. It's been an incredible couple of months and I can't believe that I'm winding down to the last two, which is kind of hard to fathom. And as I sit here and soak up every minute of today, I think to myself, only two more, that just doesn't seem plausible. But I'm going to say it again and again and again over the next couple of months, this has been such a treat, such, such a treat. Thank you so much.
Well, it's been a treat for us.
You can run for state for education anytime, with that kind of attention-getting ability.
Or governor, the singing governor.
Yeah, right.
No, it's been great, you've been really helpful.
Fantastic.
Thanks so much, Rob.
Sure.
And I think we move right to one that I need to turn over to you, Kat. It's evaluation of the superintendent and contract of superintendent. I probably won't speak to it.
Well, the board was in closed session to evaluate the superintendent and we all agree that he's done a satisfactory job. That's what the written word says. It has to be considered satisfactory in order to extend your contract, so we're very pleased with what Mike has been doing and we had some interesting discussions about how we can work better on certain areas more effectively and it was worthwhile. But we recommend that, the official vote has to be here and we, I'm moving that we extend Mike's, we add to Mike's contract to extend his contract for another year, which would be to May 1, 2013. And that we, he shall receive the same salary increase or decrease equivalent to those provided to or taken from classified state employees because we know that this is not an appropriate time for any raises. We're not doing what's been done other places maybe, but we are sending a message that we are well aware of the financial situation of the state and despite the fact that we think Mike's doing a great job, we don't think it's appropriate right now. If the state gets, if state employees do get a raise, you would get it, but if they get cut, you would get cut, so.
And that was per my request also.
That's also by your request, that you wouldn't accept a raise even if we offered it to you now. So, I move that we follow the recommendation and extend Mike's contract for, for May 1, 2013. And you all have copies of this addendum.
Madam President, could I just add, I know, and I know Reggie was eager to add this, the consensus in our discussion has been Mike's doing an excellent job and we appreciate his leadership for change and improving education in tough times. And I know Reggie was eager to make the point, we would like to give him a raise, but given the issues we discussed, it is both welcome that he would not accept it, but also appropriate that we have to do what we are doing and so, but wanted to thank you for your leadership, Mike.
Yeah, and we did, every, one of us had expressed the view that, we recognized this had been a very difficult year and.
I'm laughing because Reggie's racing in because he's got a vote. I just gave your speech.
You don't have to say anything.
Not as eloquently as you.
I don't have to say anything.
But, no, you don't have to say anything.
Shut up.
One word, one word.
I did want to say that we all recognize that it's been a very difficult year, the cuts, the cuts, at the same time we were given added responsibilities and just applying for the Race to the Top was a huge job. I mean, it was just huge. So, we're, we're all very well aware of the difficulties of managing all this and we thank Mike for doing a very good job at that, so.
Thank you, Kat.
Really, you're ready for the vote, Reggie. Sorry about that. All in favor of the motion? The motion is to extend Mike's contract for a year to May 1, 2013.
That's very appropriate, Madam President, and you know, my comment about Mike's work is that it's been excellent along with the work of his staff and I'm really grateful to this board for empowering Mike and the staff to lead this great change that they're trying to effectuate here in the state of Michigan. And I wish we were in better economic times and we could give them all a big raise, but I know they wouldn't, wouldn't take it at this point anyway. I know Mike's leadership is.
Lucky we can't test it.
I know they wouldn't take it knowing the situation our state is in and Mike, Mike would be the first person to turn it down.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Anybody else want to, anyone else to say? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? The motion carries and congratulations, Mike.
Thank you, Kat.
Good job.
Hey, Lisa, why don't you come down, state and federal? Before she does that, but still come down and be ready. Approval of the minutes, I want everyone ready from here on in. For the next four years, people are going to be ready.
I move approval of the minutes of regular and committee meeting of the Hall of March 9, 2010.
Supported by Liz, supported by Reggie. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same.
I also move approval of the minutes of the retreat work session of March 9, 2010.
Moved by Liz, supported by Carolyn. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same, thank you. Thank you, Eileen, for getting me back on track there. Lisa, and this is also the time the board might consider, or will, I guess, consider the issue related to PA 72, but Lisa, why don't you give your brief report?
Great. I, not too much has changed since I submitted this because, as you know, the state legislature's been on spring break. The supplemental that I talked about at the very beginning of the report has been signed, so that, so that we're ready to roll and I know that the staff has been working very hard to get things rolling for the Reform Office, especially as Mike already mentioned. There will be a revised exec rec brought forward by the Budget Office at the end of April or in May for the rest of the GF that will be needed for the other changes since we didn't win Race to the Top as of yet. As you interact with legislators, you know, whatever support you can lend to the, for this funding to make sure that we can implement the changes that were passed by the state legislature in December, January, we'd of course appreciate your work on that, as always. It's a tough time, I mean, you know, with the funding being cut, as you know, the Senate has passed their budgets, most of the chambers have passed their first budgets and so now our budgets are before the House. Those hearings are expected to begin with Terry Brown's Subcommittee probably next It's unclear how fast he'll be moving, there's always the, they want to have it done by July 1, especially the school aid budget, but there, it's an election year and the politics about the tax increase, the tax, actually, tax shift in ways that the governor proposed for her school aid budget is going to be a major issue. Plus, if, for the House, there's always that May revenue estimating conference and there's always a sort of a debate about whether they should have it pass, whether they should get their work done before that comes out or wait for the information and then get it out. So, you never quite know exactly when it'll come out, but I would expect by, by early May, we'll see it come out of the House and then they'll have conference committees in June.
What's the date of the revenue conference?
It's usually around May 15. I don't know the exact date, but it's usually right around there. The House Education Committee has been holding some The House Education Committee has been holding some hearings on some finance issues, actually. And some of the ones have, that they've discussed have been points you discussed this morning. They've talked about the fund balances in districts. They've been talking about some of the retirement reforms, and my guess is that that committee will continue doing hearings on that. It's unclear at this point what Senate Ed has planned for the spring session. I haven't heard that they have a particular theme or direction that they're going, but I would expect them to start moving probably odds and ends at least to begin with over the next couple of weeks. At the federal level, the main message that's been expressed to Congress is, of course, for the ESEA reauthorization is the idea of flexibility and capacity. Those are the two words that are, that are being pushed by the states through both, I think, the State Board of Ed, the National State Board of Ed's groups, the National Governors Association, CCSSO, has all been pushing for increased flexibility to the states, but also the feds, to help with the capacity issue for all of the additional requirements and work that they're putting on the departments to, for the oversight, all the stuff that you heard Sally and Carol talk about earlier, the monitoring and such. The, the only other point was, you had talked at a previous mission, meeting about the Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning Act of 2009. The update on that is it appears it's going to be rolled into the ESEA reauthorization. So there won't be a separate standalone bill out there. It will become part of, and I think part of the reason they did that is that the ideas that are behind this and the philosophies behind this, they want to see captured throughout the ESEA, as opposed to one standalone piece, and that's not really integrated.
Good sense.
That makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. That was all I have in terms of just updates from the report.
Okay. Well, we talked earlier about doing something about PA 72, which we all know is the legislation that authorizes emergency financial managers for cities, and it's being used for school districts as well. So it's, that's the one that authorized, the governor, under which the governor appointed the financial manager for Detroit, and we heard a lot today about that. Not one side of the story. And so, Mike, you want to explain what it is you're asking?
It's kind of a coincidence, but we had discussed even before the presentation that it might be helpful. We've been working with Treasury, and we're, we're happy that they're, they and the Governor's lawyers, I think, are interested in trying to improve on PA 72. And, but I think it would be excellent if the board would weigh in and say they, that in effect you support revisions that would bring clarity to roles, that would maybe improve, or however you might want to word, oversight. You know, it could be as general as that, but I think that would be important to be on record, and it would also kind of help mitigate a little bit of what we saw today, which is people assume that we have authority, that we don't. Maybe we will and should in a revised PA 72, and, but it can also be more specific if you'd like. That's certainly
Is there language that you would recommend, or the staff would recommend, in terms of what would be helpful to clarify the roles and responsibilities under this act in certain ways? I mean, I think we'd be open, I would too. What is the recommendation and language that we should endorse?
I'm looking to Carol, but I think an oversight board on our side that is similar to the oversight board that's on the city side would be helpful.
There's two ways to go. You can, we can be added to the oversight board for municipalities, because often if the municipality has an emergency financial manager, a district might, or we can ask for a separate board. But the problem with a separate board is probably be one and the same group of people.
That's a good point.
Who, what is the, what is the board, who constitutes the board for the municipalities?
The state treasurer, the budget director, and I can't remember the other. But, I mean, we can actually bring some further language at some point. I just think the main thing today that would be important, doesn't mean you can't be that specific, but would be that we really do believe an improvement on PA 72 needs to be made. And we could even potentially have some other suggestions that I'd ask Carol maybe to put together for the next meeting. That could be more concrete, so we're more thoughtful. But the spirit behind it, it would be good today, because I think it's something that is being worked on in the Governor's office. Yes, please.
I would just say, I'm all for doing this, and, but it might be worth asking the current board that oversees municipalities that are, if there were any lang, if there's any language that would improve their ability to do their job, so that if we're doing an amendment to give education folks a chance to, you know, to monitor the emergency financial manager kind of situation, that we incorporate the improvements, if there are any to, to be made. I don't know that there are any, but I think, you know, if you're opening legislation for an addition, you can correct, make it stronger for both, it would be good.
Yeah, Mary Ann, please.
Just a question. If, if Bob was appointed under the PA 72 aspect that said appointing a financial officer for a city, couldn't we then ask that same board to at least provide immediate oversight until or when another board is appointed?
Could I ask? No, I don't mean that specifically. I mean, I don't know what, what they would do quickly is have law to support that, as opposed to a complete revision of PA 72 at the same time. I mean, I think, I don't know, we have a lawyer here, maybe he's
Maybe as an interim.
I'm practicing law. I was trying to make that very clear when I'm sitting at this table.
But you will be paying a service tax, have I heard?
Mary Ann has her way.
If I have my way, yeah.
Paying that tax.
Six percent.
My understanding that, is my understanding that, that the, as you indicated, the municipal side of PA 72 has that board, but there is no such board for the education side of PA 72.
Right, I realized that, yeah.
So I'm not sure what authority the municipal board would have to engage in any oversight with respect to Robert Bob. There's a, the expression that comes to mind is expresio unius est exclusio alterius.
I was thinking the same thing.
The expression of one thing is the exclusion of another.
But, but since it was, the whole act was stretched in order to appoint him, couldn't it be stretched to have this, this board provide the oversight?
I think the education side of it has been there for years, and has been used on the
Had never been used before Inxter.
Right.
Inxter was the first one.
Inxter was the first, right.
And that was, I thought that was a stretch.
Yeah, well
That was considered to be a stretch.
Was it? Okay. Well, we, we think the current law gives authority to declare a financial emergency, for instance, which is important, and it's, and it's really not the preferable thing to do, which is to get a deficit elimination plan that people act on, as I said earlier. But it's kind of the last remedy if that doesn't happen at a local level. But I, I do think, you know, I'm thinking out loud, of course, if and when, not, if I'm sure, sure when PA 72 revisions are out there, then we'll have an opportunity to even weigh in more specifically on what comes out and is being proposed as a PA 72 replacement. So in a way
But, see, I, I think the situation calls for something now.
Right.
And by the time a law gets enacted, it makes its way through the legislature and even goes into effect, we're talking about these 45 schools having already been closed. Plus, over a year has gone by, and there's been no reporting. So, I mean, can we at least ask the municipal board to at least request a report?
Should we ask the governor to request?
I just, you know, I certainly understand the concerns that are being expressed, and I'm certainly for accountability and transparency with respect to all of state government. And I, I think that in talking about changes to Public Act 72, we should think about the statute itself and as it would apply to all, or any and all school districts that would have a financial emergency, and not so much in the context of a particular individual, because I think that could unfortunately, you know, politicize the discussion in the legislature too much and polarize people around their positions on a particular individual. I think, you know, what this board's role would be to recommend changes, would be to review changes recommended by Superintendent Flanagan, and endorse some or all of those changes, and then communicate those, I think, in a generic way to the legislature as, as changes we think would improve the administration of, of school districts under Public Act 72. And I think that's a, I think that's a very important issue. It's related to the issues that you're raising with respect to Detroit, but it's, but it's a bigger issue, and I think the important issue to resolve. The issue with respect to Detroit, I think, you know, I think this has been stated earlier, I think that there should, if there are concerns about immediate changes with respect to Detroit, that, that a conversation should be had with, with Governor Granholm's staff about, about those concerns.
Well, I'm not, I'm not dismissing all of that. And, and that would be great to have a conversation with the governor's staff and to proceed with Mike's, Mike's suggestion. All I'm saying is, in the interim, can we at least ask the municipal oversight board to request
A report.
A report?
On the report piece? The legislature did add language at the very end of December, requesting an additional report be done by any district, not, it's not a Detroit-specific, but anybody who's under the emergency financial manager. That report wouldn't be due, I don't believe, until June 15th, six months after the date of the effective. So there would be information coming, if I'm remembering correctly.
But it would be due then?
Yes, it would be due.
It's June 16th.
I believe that it gave him six months after that.
That's helpful. That was passed?
That's good.
Okay.
But I make a suggestion, though, that, that we do what we, you were talking about, but that we also make a formal request, not to the governor's staff, but to the governor. She's the one who's responsible, put a form, make a formal motion that in order to fulfill our responsibilities, our constitutional responsibilities of oversight over all public education, says in the Constitution, that we request her, under her authority, her, her sole authority, to request written report from him by, you know, 15 days from now, or something, that would be made public.
Only because Carol's giving, doing facials over there. I'm not sure what, which way that means, good or bad, but
It's in the law. They have to do it. And we do continue to get all of their reports as required under their consent agreement, so.
We do get reports.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, but we don't, see, I think what we're missing is
Why don't we get them then?
Yeah, why don't we get copies of those then, if we get copies? Then they would be made public.
Let's, let's define things here.
That may be what he's worried about.
Yeah, maybe we're talking about different kinds of reports.
No, 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 I'm fine with everything we get. I said that today. Everything we get, you can get and can be public. What I, understanding though, is your concern or about some of the contract issues that I don't think we receive reports on. So I don't want to mix up, you know, when, when there were inferences today about contracts being given, we don't get anything related to that, or do we?
Under accounts pay, we get an accounts payable.
But not the contract itself, not whether it's been bid or not, not whether any of that, right? So I mean, the parts that you were earlier getting at are not reports we get. But let's, let's do this, just to be clear. Everything we do get, we'll send copies to the board and we'll make
That would be great.
That would be helpful. But let me ask, what's in the law, is financial reports only, or does it include information like this on contracts and stuff?
You know, I don't have it right in front of me, but there was a section added in December, and I'm not sure if, if Carol has it, no. But there was some specific
It, it does give specifics. It says a description of each expenditure made, approved, or disapproved during the reporting period with a cumulative value of $10,000 or more, and a list of the contracts, and so it's very specific in the law.
So the contracts, the, what they pay for the contracts, but not the details of the contracts?
What was of each contract?
And this is due by June 15th, right? Okay.
It'd be six, six months after Patrick's.
John, please.
I mean, a suggestion might be to, A, could we ask you all, Mike and the department, to bring back, you know, proposed recommendations on modifications or language, recommended modifications for the Public Act, per Reggie's description. And, two, B, or two, or B, is, since we don't really know what we're asking the governor to ask for more of for us, could we deputize somebody from the board to have the discussion Reggie was encouraging with the governor's staff on, to clarify what more do we, what do you get today, and what more do we want to get, so that we can ask for the right things of the governor in the kind of motion that you proposed? Would that be reasonable?
I would say two people.
May I have one amendment to that? We could bring specifics, but I think if in the same motion that you're doing the deputizing, if you don't mind, because I think of what, at least I inferred to the group that was here, that this, that there's also the spirit to bring back at the next meeting, but reform to PA 72 to be specified at the next meeting or something, so we can show, you know, that we haven't dropped the spirit of that.
Yeah, I hate to wait a whole month on that, too.
Yeah, I do, too.
It would, and then if stuff starts to move, it would give us license in a way to make sure we're moving it. But otherwise, I understand that, see, this is technically in the hands of Treasury as the lead agency on this. But I think we could probably do both, if you're comfortable with that, where it would be, the spirit is, let's get a revision of PA 72 that's specified. We'll try to bring back specifics. We will bring back specifics next month.
Okay, so I move that we support improvements to PA 72 to ensure more
Accountability.
Open reporting of
I'd like accountability. Carolyn just said accountability.
Yeah, or to, to assure accountability of the financial emergency manager.
And
Support. And, well, that's, that's number one. And number two is that two members of the state board and staff of a superintendent communicate with the Governor's Office to solicit more information, or, I don't know what the right way to say that is, but to solicit more information to, in order to provide more transparency and accountability of the emergency financial manager.
Both in the same
But the same
Motion, or is
It could be two motions, or it could be two parts of the one motion. Is it better to do two motions?
You can put them all in one for Mike.
Okay, so Kathy moved.
Support.
Mary Ann already supported.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you. John, please.
I wanted to say this at some point, but since Lisa mentioned, the legislature is debating budget revenue reform pieces as we speak, so I hope we can just make clear and reassert what I, what I thought we agreed to this morning in terms of the process for us from here. A being, we will need to work a process where we're sharing this emerging set of description of what the education system we need is and how we might deliver it and pay for it with stakeholders. And B, we need to gather that input, our own input, and come up with a process where we are coming to a final set of recommendations on specifically what that education system looks like and which pieces of revenue reform restructuring we support, so that we are providing guidance to the legislature with the specificity. I hope, is that, is that our, what we agreed to this morning?
I think so, yes.
And we will need to work a process to do that in that, in a timely way here, if we're going to be providing that specificity that I think is helpful.
I've got a question. Would it be possible to see all, all the submissions every other board member made
Sure.
Towards the report?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, there's a whole phalanx of supporting analysis that came as, from public sector and stuff, to just try to present those little nuggets. And I wanted to share that all, but didn't get it out over the weekend, and so how did those numbers get cooked from all the digestion? So there's a whole bunch of stuff.
That'd be helpful. Yeah.
Share it all.
Okay, that would be very helpful. And could we, could we agree to come to, go through these things one by one and decide what we, how we're going to vote on these next month?
I think we have to.
I think we do, too.
And I guess what I am saying, there And I guess what I am saying, there may be a way we can also solicit with Eileen and others' help, continued, you know...
Input.
Input on that. Which of these now are you willing to, and what language changes do you want? We need a process to get that from each of us again, and then go over it again together and say, yes.
Yeah.
I think if I'm hearing you correctly, to help Eileen on this and us together on this, it would be that if there were sticking points and it was clear that, you know, a number of members had issues, then that can be resolved that way, it would become apparent, and not necessarily need...
We don't have to go through every item, then we would have agreement, and then we'd discuss the ones with the...
Here's a few where we're still interested.
And the gray areas would be the discussion.
What if we had another little afternoon meeting or something to go over that?
Well, we've got, I mean, the good news of our next month's meeting is, in anticipation of this, we didn't fill it with a subject, if you recall, because we thought it might have the...
You mean the retreat schedule?
No.
Oh, no, the...
The regular meeting.
Right, the regular meeting.
The regular meeting isn't a business meeting, and we purposely didn't put a theme in there so that we could do this.
Yeah, so we can spend the morning.
We're anticipating we're going to do this.
We do have to do core standards. And Race to the Top.
We have Race to the Top.
Those are the two things that we...
Yeah, in May, right?
But I think what we're going to find, and I don't mean to minimize this, but Race to the Top's going to be a few areas because there's so many that are already, we've done well in, and others that we can't change. For example, we can't suddenly produce a chancellor of higher ed without a constitutional convention, and even then, we wouldn't get it. So, I don't think that would be quite what it's been.
I'm so confused.
And I think there's been a fair amount of momentum on an earlier presentation on the projected Common Core, and then attendance by Marianne, John, and Deb, but maybe that can be helpful at that meeting. So, I think we could still spend a chunk of time, is what I'm getting at, on this issue. But if I'm hearing you right, we could surprise sift it down, and we might find it's eight in agreement on item one already, so we don't need to review it.
I'll share, when everybody shared, five of you got in your full sort of forms back, and, you know, there was a lot more agreement than I anticipated, which was helpful.
Very helpful. I mean, I think it's...
Okay, that would be good. So, we can, we'll plan to do that next month, then.
Before, you know, this idea if we need to...
Maybe where there's agreement, we don't have to have a long discussion about that part.
Right, we just say, okay, this is agreed upon.
Okay. Thank you, Liz.
Oh, I just want to, Lisa, there was one. Representative Lottie has introduced legislation to allow ISD superintendents to also be superintendent of a local district.
Oh, yeah, be superintendent of local.
Yes.
Is the staff looking at that?
We are looking at it. There's, I've sent out an email to a couple of the different directors to ask if there's any conflict of interest stuff that we need to be worried about from our oversight, because while that's a good consolidation, if there's times where the ISD superintendent is making decisions, there may create conflicts. And so, I'm trying to find out from various directors in different areas of the department what concerns we have that we can express to the legislature.
You might want to take a position on that, too, so...
Yeah. The spirit behind it, given any problems, would be good.
Spirit is good.
There are some ISDs with only three districts.
Yeah, right.
And 5,000 kids.
Yeah, should it be an ISD at all? That's another question.
There's some functions that they have right now that could be conflicts of interest, like investigating special ed complaints, which are done now at the ISD level and the district is in, you know...
Maybe it could be crafted to, that would have to be yielded to another ISD or something.
Yeah, so, some thought about some of that stuff.
Okay. We're now at N, which is, I think Nancy was going to do this and wasn't able to stay. I don't know if, but that doesn't mean the board itself may have other...
Well, we all got copies of this, I think, from NASB, that this, every year we get this request, and of course, we, one year, you know, this past year we had Governor Granholm, and the year before, Representative Tildy, so unlikely we're going to get anybody from Michigan that does that stuff, but we can recommend anybody else, you know, we can recommend whoever we want. And one of the people I thought of for the Policy Leader of the Year is Congressman George Miller, Chairman of the Education Committee in the House.
That makes a lot of sense.
It doesn't mean we have to nominate him, but we could, just throw him in the hopper.
So to speak.
I don't know if anybody wants to do that, but...
I'll nominate him.
I'll support it.
Okay, nominated by Marianne, supported by Liz. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Okay.
Good.
Let's, Consent Agenda.
Are they asking for a nominee for Central Area Director?
Yes, they are.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yes, they are. Well, I'd like to nominate our own John Austin.
I support that.
That's a great idea.
Nominated by Marianne.
Nominated, do I have to serve?
Yeah. Two meetings. It's the same thing they said about being on this board, oh, it's only one meeting a month, but that's, it's, actually, it's like three meetings a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be great, seriously, to have direct representation there. Anyway, I think it was supported by Liz, or Carolyn, maybe both.
Yeah, right.
Any discussion or denials?
You go to Washington anyway, you just go do your business.
No, I resisted because I don't need to be on another board, and I've been really skeptical of NASB's effectiveness overall.
Well, see, you can work on that.
But if we must make it effective and speak for us, then I would serve in this capacity.
All right.
At least it raises people's awareness, and you can put your ideas out there.
Let's have a quick vote before we change it.
Put our ideas out there.
Well, I know, right?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Okay, John.
Be quiet, John. That's called being drafted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, if you're on the board or director, you're eligible...
Fake draft.
Recipe for election.
John, if you're on the board, then you're then eligible to become president of NASB, and then you can make it really effective.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, look ahead.
Go smooth with Ernie and...
Yeah, seriously. There's no downside to having...
Right, it'd be great for us.
I think it'd be great.
And you'd enjoy it, too.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Marianne, for bringing that up.
Good idea.
Okay.
They were at the Consent Agenda. I think we just have a motion?
I move the Consent Agenda.
Moved by Liz.
Support.
Cassandra. Carol. Any, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Any comments before we end?
Did Marianne want to give her a report on the...
Well, they mentioned holding it till next month.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I can do it now if you want, but...
We're going to have it on the agenda, so next month, so that might be appropriate.
Can we just build that in?
No, I just wanted to say a couple of things. Cassandra and I went to the Legislative Committee meeting and got a chance to go around to the Congress and talk about the reauthorization. I think some of my concerns were expressed earlier during this meeting that we really should keep our eye on the ball of the reauthorization, because that's what we live under, and I've been really encouraging, as I go around the state, encouraging educators and others who care about how we implement federal policy to weigh in and have their voices heard. I think sometimes we get whatever they want to give us if we haven't spoken up about how it falls, you know, on the plane. So, you know, and I think we all have a duty to really talk, particularly as we're with our memberships and organizations and individuals. A lot of people don't understand why we do what we do when we're implementing federal law in terms of making a policy direction, you know, and we're trying to do adequate yearly progress and all of that, the fact that we're working in this constellation of laws and so. So, that's really good. The other thing I wanted to say is I was so excited to see Laurie Higgins and the other authors talking about newspaper articles, yours is great, but...
Wonderful article yesterday.
They thought Westwood Cyber High School yesterday filled two full pages of the Detroit Free Press, and not only was it good publicity, but it was really well-written in describing how the school works, the attention to proficiency and the grade level content expectations, that it wasn't just a tech, it wasn't just a tech school, but that it really, that students knew what they were supposed to learn and be able to do, and we're working toward achieving those expectations. I think actually, whether it's a cyber education or a traditional in pencil-paper kind, I think if we help students better understand what the grade level content expectations are for them, and where they're going, and why they're doing what they're doing, the instruction would be more relevant to all of them.
You know, a little add on to that story, a couple of you know this, but I teach a grad class for, this is my 16th year, starting in, usually in May and June, and the folks who dreamed this up, kind of, it was their presentation in my class from Westwood, and then one thing led to another, and Ernie called me and said, geez, I hear you're doing these waivers, maybe we can bring them on board. Our team listened to it, and we were already doing seat time waivers, but it was interesting that this, I think the young man now is actually the director of the program.
Glenn Taylor.
Glenn, who was also a good student, but it was, and it wasn't specified, the project wasn't specified to be technology, they just happened to make that their project on the last session, and ran into him with you when we were at McCall Dinner, he was there, and they're just, you know, they're really kind of pioneers, they've really, I think all the seat time folks have done a good job on this. These folks have kind of taken it to another level, and that's what I think they're...
And it's probably good for some students and not for all, but it was so often, these programs are kind of half-reported, and this, the reporters deserve credit in this one for going deep and...
Right, it was after Liz and I went to see that, I spoke to Laurie Higgins and suggested that she go there and see it for herself, because I told her it was really an impressive program. And she said, well, I've heard about it, I have to get an editor interested in it, so...
It worked.
It took her a while, but she did it.
Good, good.
Thank you for suggesting it.
Good job, Karen.
Any other, John?
Sorry, I told Eileen, yesterday, a meeting that I'm going to have to be at was confirmed for May 18th, unfortunately. There's this summit on the Future of Auto Impact to Communities that the Obama Administration in Montgomery, Larry Summers, Brookings, and the funders from the region are sponsoring this. It got finally confirmed it's going to be a retreat date, so I need to be there for my day job, so, I apologize for not knowing exactly what to do, except...
Well, I don't know, I'm just totally insulted.
You're passing us over.
I try to protect all the...
You will have to write a paper and turn it in ahead of time with your inputs for them to be...
Retreat won't be the same without, maybe we could find another date.
What board prerogative?
Maybe we won't need, or is it, was it going to be about the revenue?
Is there any...
What else do we do this year, right? Or maybe we should do...
We could look for another day, because we'll have the regular board meeting to do the work on the project.
I appreciate it. I want to sludge home without any understanding.
You know, the set goals and everything.
It's just a one day, it's just this summit, it was settled on this day for everybody's schedule.
The board's permission, we'll ask Eileen to try to find another day?
Yeah, find another day. Find with me.
It isn't time-sensitive in one sense, especially with the other...
We wanted to do it so we could set our goals and everything, but...
Do you want to think realistically about trying to keep the same week? I don't know about Reggie's schedule. I mean, if we were going to do it on Tuesday, John will be back, and we could maybe do a Thursday, I don't know, just an idea.
Why don't we poll and use that as one option?
I don't know what Reggie...
We're a couple down. Not everyone has their calendar here.
Yeah, you polled, but I...
What could you suggest, maybe? I was thinking the 20th is Thursday, that's when we were going to meet on Tuesday, but I don't know about Reggie.
Eileen, can you help figure this out?
Yeah. Um, I don't, I'm looking at...
Yeah, I think if we do an email survey and then...
Yeah, can we do that? We'll throw a few dates out on it.
We'll send some possible dates to you.
Email survey, and one of them can be Carolyn's suggestion.
Carolyn's suggestion on the 20th.
We'll throw a few, a few out and see when we can get 100%. If John can't make another one, then up for John.
So, we'll assume at this point the May 18th retreat date is canceled and, or postponed until another date.
Okay.
Okay, oh, boy.
I'll put out...
Because especially the action at the regular meeting, it almost becomes our big thing for the coming year, right? Is how to get that...
It does, almost, maybe we don't need another one.
I mean, it might be timely to have one a little later when we have some teeth on it anyway, and not look for May, because we'll be just absorbing this big initiative, which is how to have the board have an impact on, I think there's still an opportunity, like some of you said, to have an impact on lame duck.
Yeah, we've got to have an impact on lame duck, something has to be done.
Yeah, I mean, as Rob said, it's critical now.
It's an emergency for a lot of places, a lot of districts.
Okay?